I state your name.
I Donald Gardner.
Having been appointed to the Office of Patrol Officer.
Having been appointed to the Office of Patrol Officer.
For the United City of Yorkville.
For the United City of Yorkville.
In the county of Kendall at four seven.
In the county of Kendall at four seven.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Patrol Officer.
Of the Office of Patrol Officer.
Of the United City of Yorkville Police Department.
Of the United City of Yorkville Police Department.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All for the Lord. Okay, we do have one public hearing today. I think, I guess, open the public hearing and then close it. The petitioner is that we move this to the next council meeting. So, um, do I need a motion to open the public hearing? So I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, so we are open on a public hearing for Grand Reserve amended annexation agreement and planned unit development. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing and bring it back in two weeks.
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, probably the easiest public hearing we're ever gonna have. Uh, citizen comments. Anyone, any citizens here that would like to comment, I see? Please step up, state your name for the audience for the record. Good evening, Your Honor, members of the soundable council, citizens, and members of the press. This evening, I would like to clarify some statements that I have made that have either been taken out of content either innocently or in an attempt to embarrass the council in part or in whole. Your Honor, I wish to begin with the first action the council took this evening, the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance. Within that pledge, we reaffirm the words unto the Republic for which it stands. The words are in reference to Article Four, Section Four of the United States Constitution, which reads, "The United States shall guarantee to every state in the Union a republican form of government, and shall protect each of them against invasion and on application of the legislature or of the executive when the legislature cannot be convened against domestic violence." In these two statements, the people of the United States are guaranteed a republican form of government. The question then becomes, what is a republican form of government? We may define a republic to be a government which derives all its powers directly or indirectly from the great body of the people and is administered by the persons holding their offices during pleasure for a limited period or during good behavior. It is essential to such government that it be derived from the great body of the society, not from an inconsiderable proportion or a favored class of it. Otherwise, a handful of tyrannical nobles exercising their oppressions by a delegation of their powers might aspire to the rank of Republicans and claim for their government the honorable title of the republic. James Madison, Federalist, Essay Number Ten, Seventeen Eighty- Seventeen Eighty-Seven. But what are the Federalist Papers? In the days of old, one state was holding out on this great experiment of a new form of government called a republic. Three men chose to convince the good people of New York that a republican form of government under the Constitution of the United States was the way to go. This new constitution would be the new law of the land, and the people themselves would be the law. Three men, Your Honor, would be Alexander Hamilton, the First Secretary Treasurer, John Jay, the First Chief Justice of the United States Supreme Court, and James Madison, the Fourth President of the United States. Three powerful men exercised their political power together with, could have exercised their political power with made-up laws, corrupt case law, twisted common law in inferior courts to force New York into this new federation of states. But they did not. Instead, they chose to write a series of eighty-five essays compiled later into a document or book to sell their idea to the American people known as the Federalists or the Federalist Papers. Are the ideas old or antiquated? I challenge and submit the following. You will recall earlier this summer, the state's attorney, Lisa Madigan, attempted to call out every gun owner in the state of Illinois by attempting to make their names public and stating that no gun owner has privacy rights. This was a direct violation of the Second, Fourth, and Fifth Amendments, others in interpretation pending. The good sheriffs throughout the state of Illinois refused to comply and work with the Illinois State Police and state legislature to stop this. The sheriff's offices, for all practical purpose, purposes acted as their own authorities within the respectable counties. Legal, the Federalist Number Twenty-Six, in part, schemes to subvert the liberties of a great community require time to mature for their execution. If such presumptions can be fairly made, they're ought to, at once, to be an end of all delegated authority. The people should resolve to recall all the powers they have heretofore to parted with out of their own hands and divide themselves into as many states as there are counties in order that they may be able to manage their own concerns in person. The definition of a republican form of government is then very clear. It is a government that governs with the consent of the governed, and the people reserve the right to repeal any form of government as outlined in the Declaration of Independence, and a form of government in which the people take back powers that they have given to the government. Thus, a reform, a republican form of government must never be confused with the Republican Party. How then can an ordinary citizen determine whether a person is a Republican or a Republican politician? By their votes. A true Republican will vote by the rule of law, known as the will of the people. The Democrat will vote by the majority in his party, and yes, people calling themselves Republicans can and do practice democracy, especially in the state of Illinois. The Republican will demand equality and that everyone be treated equally based on the scales of justice. The Democrat will depend, demand the socialist doctrine of fairness, which is subjective and, as we have seen throughout history, can never be permanently sustained. The Republican will draw from the treasury of the consent of the people for those projects that concern the welfare of the general public. The Democrat targets his expenditures which benefit the government. The Republican believes, in the words of Thaddeus McCarter, "You cannot inspire a person by making him dependent on others," while the Democrat pours out an endless supply of empathy to the down and trout and keep them enslaved within themselves. A few weeks ago, I visited the battlefields of Gettysburg. I stood at the place where Illinois's very own Abraham Lincoln stood and gave his famous address, the Hallowed Ground, which was already consecrated by the blood of the fallen. The Gettysburg Address is tied with the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, and the Bill of Rights. As I stood before that monument, I read the words, the last parts of his words, that "We here are to resolve that these dead shall not have died in vain, that this nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom, and that government of the people, by the people, for the people, shall not perish from the earth." I then recall that day when I heard a letter read from a soldier in Iraq to his mother, who will soon be coming home. Technology has helped our soldiers stay in touch with their families and has helped them keep up with current events. The soldier then has asked his mother. The soldier then asked his mother, "Is there a government worth coming home to?" Lincoln and Kennedy are rumored to have had many coincidences. Today, we remember, we remember that fateful day forty-nine years ago when the life of President John F. Kennedy was taken. A few weeks ago, this council began the discussion of annexing people's property for the sole purpose of raising revenue, and I recall the speech of President Kennedy had given just a few months before his assassination. President Kennedy stated, and there are even a few who say that it is true that communism is an evil system, but it permits us to make economic promise, progress. La Sique not Berlin in common, let them come to Berlin. Is there a government worth coming home to? I believe that the time has come for all city councils, plus county, state, and federal governments throughout our nation, to look at these soldiers in the eyes and answer that very question. Your Honor, I thank you and yield the floor back to you, the soundable council.
Thank you. Do you have any other citizen comment?
Okay, next is Minutes. Yes. Oh, please step to the podium and sign in and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Anthony, Anthony Morrow. Hello. I'm a sixty-year-old senior citizen, and I live in Yorkville. Came to Yorkville in nineteen eighty-eight. Have a business in Yorkville, and I work out at the Rec Center every single day. I'm here to make a couple of minutes, take a couple of minutes of your time to talk about just the Rec Center and appeal for it because I know that the vote is a very tough vote because it involves fourteen hundred very active and engaged citizens of Yorkville. For us, the Rec Center is a daily town hall where doctors, lawyers, judges, bankers, sheriffs, police, business owners, and stay-at-home moms come every single day to greet and meet with their kids. Well, not all of them come with their kids, but they do come every single day. Because of the Rec Center, we are healthy, we're active, and we're engaged. The council here, everybody here meets twice a month. At the Rec Center, we meet every single day, and it's amazing the amount of talk that goes on about national, local, and regional issues, about how we're gonna vote, who we're gonna vote for, how sides are taking for the Rec Center, against the Rec Center, well, not so much against the Rec Center, but really pro-Rec Center. I can't believe there's more people than are here this evening because this week and a couple of weeks from now is our last opportunity to make a plea for people that use the Rec Center to keep the Rec Center. Your focus is on debt and revenue ratios of a balance sheet, and we talk about goodwill and intrinsic values, which are equally as important, but also a very valuable asset on any balance sheet of any business. The Rec Center for us is an inexpensive health care, and for the hundred, fourteen hundred members, it's growing every single year. Since the city took over the Rec Center, one of the things that we try to do as a business is to grow sales and keep down expenses. We try to operate in the black. But for all of us that are members of the Rec Center, we spend five hundred dollars a year, and for right now, the city is subsidizing, basically a way of looking at it, thirty-six dollars a year for that service. To make the Rec Center revenue neutral, we need a hundred new members. To make it revenue neutral with a cushion, we need another hundred members. Three years ago, my friend Kenny Talktoy brought me and another man to the Rec Center. He increased the membership by two. So Brad Matheri and myself are members. Both Brad and myself, in the three years that we've been there, have managed to bring in another dozen people between the both of us. If every one of the members of the council here, if every one of the members that sat in this room, if half of the members of the Rec Center were to bring in another person, we'd be a very, we'd be very flesh and cash, and we'd be making contributions to the city itself. In the couple of years that we've owned it, we've increased membership by seventy-five percent, and I don't know if there's enough time for us to be able to increase it by another couple hundred members. So I guess the plea's a couple, it's twofold. One, to look at the intrinsic value and the goodwill of the Rec Center and that it has for all of us that are there. There's several people in the room right now that are also members of the Rec Center that I see there on a regular basis. There's many members in this council that I don't see at all. So my plea is to give it more time, and my plea is also to continue operating it as a business. It did come to us, by way of it not being a business, for it to be something special that would draw, several years ago, that would draw people to our community. And now that we have it, it's awfully difficult for us to give up something that has become very special for us, something that has, that has done wonders for the people that are members of the Rec Center. If I were any one of the council members myself, or if I were the mayor, I would be actively involved there. I'd be there at least every single day of the week because it's there that you really do get a feel as to what's going on in Yorkville and a true opinion as to how things are being run in Yorkville, and some advice as to directions that we can take. That would be my town hall, and I would be active there, I would be engaged there, and just the fact that if every one of us that are here as public servants were members there, it would go a long way to increasing the membership of the Rec Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Okay, then, moving on, is consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yorkville.
Aye.
Milcowski.
Aye.
Spears.
Aye.
Funkhauser.
Aye.
Gilson.
Aye.
Cut.
Aye.
Next is Minutes. A motion to approve the minutes of the Regency Council for November eighth, two thousand eleven, as presented.
Still moved.
Second.
Comments, questions, or minutes?
George?
I have one correction on page three and six. It'd be the paragraph that starts with Alderman Gilson. Further down in the paragraph, about mid-paragraph, it says, "Alderman Gilson knows for sure that the residents want the road repaired. It is foolish to spend one hundred thousand dollars on a study when the city barely has enough money now under the capital improvements for road improvements through fiscal year fourteen." It should be foolish for the city to spend a hundred thousand dollars on a study when the city has one hundred thousand dollars under the capital improvements for road improvements through fiscal year fourteen. It should be when the city only has, excuse me, one hundred thousand dollars under the capital improvements for road improvements under fiscal year fourteen. Yeah, just cross out barely and put, "The city only has one hundred thousand dollars," and then continue on with the sentence, "Under," get rid of "enough money now" and put "under the capital improvements for road improvements through fiscal year fourteen."
Anyone else, Carla?
On page four, last paragraph, it starts with Alderman Funkhauser, Alderman Pelosi Moon, City Attorney, or, and then the next sentence says, "He asks, what is the timeframe and how is it monitored?" I believe the he was Alderman Funkhauser, I don't know if we need to check the tapes, who asked that question. I just think for future archival purposes, it should state which one actually asked
Anyone else? Jackie?
Page three. Paragraph three is actually out of place. It should be within paragraph four, between Alderman Spears and Alderman Teeling's comments, that's the fifth line. That entire paragraph is just out of place.
Paragraph three should be within paragraph four.
No, it should be within paragraph four. After Alderman Spears comments agrees with having the study done, and after that sentence is where that paragraph should be placed. And then within that paragraph three, second to the last sentence, there's the comment in there, "Based on facts on engineering," I believe it was "based on facts and engineering." And one more, page five. Regarding city council procedures, it is the sixth line, "There was a discussion among Alderman in regards to committees." That was a, shouldn't be a question, I don't believe. That's all I have.
And your sheath.
I don't have a correction, I have a comment. When there are these corrections to the minutes, I, I don't know, and Kathy, maybe you could correct me, I don't think they're properly reflected in the, like, if you look in these minutes, they're not clearly reflected as to what got corrected. Does it have to be?
It doesn't have to be, but the practice in Yorkville, which has been here a long time, was to have a notation on the minutes that there is a correction so that you would look to the next set of minutes, so that it should be reflected in the next set of minutes, but it makes it a lot clearer to anyone future, in the future, reading the minutes, that it's notated on the side in the margin, corrected at the next set of minutes. That's the way we had been doing. It's not a requirement, but it is a good.
It's just when you read it, you know there's corrections, but it's not really clear what you're correcting.
So on the side, there's usually a notation that says corrected. You can just, what was the notation?
I never, I never did it on the side, I just bullet pointed in a little bit more detail. I, that just probably me.
I think all.
I put it in italics, that's when I make the correction. But, no, I'm saying on these.
You don't make them on these. The way to let future readers of minutes know that there was a correction to it is to make some kind of an annotation, corrected, so that I would know to read the next set of minutes to find out the specifics of what is said. So some notation. Our prior clerk made more than a notation, but a notation would be sufficient to let us know.
But they are noted, that does note them, it just, it's, I didn't know if they're, to me, it's very vague of the correction, so I didn't know if it's.
You can just note corrected so that you would go to the next because there should be a, you know, minute saying what was corrected, so.
There's just a comment?
Yeah.
Okay, I did it, one more correction on the very last page, under holiday under the stars, talks about a live interview with Fred Garrett, that's supposed to be Greg J R E E T, J R, J R R E T.
J R R E T. Greg Jarrett.
Yes. Okay, roll call, please.
This is asked correctly.
They can do it voice.
You can do it voice where it is.
All right, all in favor as amended? Aye. All opposed? Moved on to Mayor's Report. I do have a proclamation for National Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month. A United City of Yorkville proclamation, whereas motor vehicles, motor vehicle crashes kill nine hundred and twenty-seven people in Illinois during twenty-ten, and whereas hundreds of those deaths involve a driver impaired by alcohol and/or drugs, whereas the December holiday season is traditionally one of the most deadly times of the year for impaired driving, and whereas for thousands of families across the state and the nation, holidays are a time to remember loved ones lost, and whereas organizations across the state and the nation are joined with the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over and other campaigns that foster public awareness of the dangers of impaired driving and anti-impaired driving law enforcement efforts, and whereas the community of the United City of Yorkville is proud to partner with the Illinois Department of Transportation's Division of Traffic Safety and other traffic safety groups in that effort to make our roads and streets safer. Now therefore, I, Mayor Gary J. Golinski, do hereby proclaim December twenty-eleven as Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month in the United City of Yorkville, and do hereby call upon all citizens, government agencies, business leaders, hospitals, and healthcare providers, schools, and public and private institutions to promote awareness of the impaired driving problem, to support programs and policies to reduce the incidence of impaired driving, and to promote safer and healthier behaviors regarding the use of alcohol and other drugs this December holiday season and throughout the year, dated this twenty-second day of November twenty-eleven A.D. Next is an appointment to Zoning Board of Appeals. I will entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Anthony Peckick to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Still moved.
Second.
Comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Gilson.
Aye.
Teeling. Funkhauser.
Aye.
Cut.
Aye.
Pelosi.
Aye.
Spears.
Aye.
Milcowski.
Aye.
Okay, next, I'll entertain a motion to authorize entry into a one-year insurance agreement with Glatfelter in an amount not to exceed two hundred and eighty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Still moved.
Peckick.
Okay, we have Mike Mesro here from our insurance broker. Can you answer any questions or?
The coverages are a little different from policy that we're proposing to go to, to what we currently have. Mike can answer questions if anybody has details, but in general, we're looking at a significant reduction, which is why we chose to go with Glatfelter.
George?
I have a few questions. First question I had was, can you just basically give us an overview on what the difference, the major differences are? And I've read some of them, but what the major differences are between the old and the proposed new?
Well, actually, the major difference is the, how the current carrier, Travelers versus Glatfelter, is going to cover the Glen Palmer Dam. Early on in this negotiation, we started working on this in, this renewal in late August, of which Travelers was not going to provide coverage for your incidental general liability exposure for that Glen Palmer Dam. They did some loss control and were only gonna provide us a million-dollar limit. Well, that's not good enough. We need that full ten million dollar limit before I'll feel comfortable. So the other carriers, we were able to, one, two, three, four, five other carriers to provide quotations that were gonna fully cover your Glen Palmer Dam through the excess layers. After Travelers found that out, they decided that they are gonna provide the full limit, but we're gonna come back and risk control it in April. None of the other carriers are gonna have a problem. Now, I don't think there's gonna be any issue, but I just don't trust Travelers at this point. If, if something comes up, they're gonna potentially pull the excess coverage specifically for the Glen Palmer Dam. And as Bart said, there are, there are some few ancillary coverages that are different. I have all of those outlined in a Excel spreadsheet that I can share with you, where they are detailed in the executive summary of the proposal that was put together.
Gary, I have a few more if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Okay, the reason why they weren't, you said they were going, because in here it says they weren't going to cover, but you said they really were gonna cover, they were just, a million dollars for?
By the time, you know, I. By the time, you know, I advised them after this was all fully printed, they came back and advised me that they were going to provide coverage, but they were going to re-loss control it in April. I think that's when their, the state's going to turn the dam over to the, or the operations to the City of Yorkville.
And they just think that, they thought that that would cause obviously more liability concerns, and at that point, they would relook at that? Is that kind of the feeling you got?
Basically, yes. I don't know what their issue was. We're, we're having difficulty with Travelers with another, a number of other insureds as well. They're still an excellent carrier, but, you know, if they're going to hang this out on us, that's just not fair.
Okay, in the executive summary, it states that we received five quotations, Travelers, One Beacon, Argonaut, American Alternative, Gladfelter, and IC RMT. We found that American Alternatives Insurance Company, AIC, quotations the most comprehensive. Now, is AIC, AAIC, the same as Gladfelter?
Yes, Gladfelter is actually what's called a program manager. They run a municipal insurance program that brokers like myself purchase it from. They buy it up on mass quantities and are able to get really comprehensive and cost-effective coverages. American Alternative Insurance Company is a very large company that actually is rated higher than Travelers. Travelers is an A-15. American Alternative is an A-plus-15. Not too much of a difference, but they're, they're a commercial insurance company. Most people would never hear of them like you do State Farm or Farmers, but they're a very, very large and significant player in the commercial world.
But they both gave us two separate quotations? I mean, you're saying they're essentially one and the same, but do we, part of those five quotations we got from American Alternatives Insurance and Gladfelter, were those two separate quotations?
Gladfelter and American Alternative are the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, Gladfelter is just the company that runs the program that procures the insurance for American Alternative.
And one other question for you. The 10.8% increase in blanket real and personal property limited insurance coverage was a direct result of what reason?
Increased values. We need to increase values typically by 3% on your real property, which are all your buildings, and then I, I can get back to you on what else was increased. Although you think real estate values are going down, we insure the cost, and the cost to reproduce your building. So it's a reproduction cost.
So if our building, for example, our real estate cost is $150,000, and we all know real estate has gone down, okay, and $150,000 is just a number, obviously, it's not that, that. But with real estate going down, wouldn't it be the current replacement cost that you're insuring on?
We, we replace it at the current cost. Sure, the real estate market is depressed, but the cost to re-replace it is not depressed. The cost to hire workers, the cost to get materials is expensive, is more expensive.
And I guess I don't quite understand that. Maybe you can shed some more light on that. My home in particular, I, my insurance obviously has gone down because my home is not worth what it used to be, and so I didn't have to insure it for the same amount that I originally was insuring it for, for a replacement cost. Isn't it the same concept or is it a different concept?
With all due respect, I disagree with how that was done. Your house is X. Although it's not worth more, it's still going to cost you that original X, if not more, to rebuild it. Because there might be codes that you might have to, you know, some ordinance or laws that you might need to do. The cost of bricks, materials, I mean, we all go to Home Depot and we do see how much more goods and materials and services do cost. And that's, you know, I'm not a real estate expert, I'm not an economist, but, you know, depressed real estate is unfortunately why people are underwater, even though they still probably should insure their home or their buildings to that value, if not up it by 3% for inflation.
Okay. And then in executive summary 2.2, it said there's an 8.6% increase. Is that an overall increase in our costs?
In, I'm sorry?
In executive, in executive summary 2.2, where it says, the summary, in summary, the city's overall premiums are decreasing from 316,782 to 289,476, and it says, or an 8.6% increase. Wouldn't, shouldn't that be decrease?
Yes, that's a typo.
Okay. That's what I was.
I apologize.
Okay, that's all I have.
One thing I do want to point out is that you're with the, currently for workers' compensation, you're with the Illinois Public Risk Fund, and for the first time this year, you are being awarded a $6,200 safety grant. You can get defibrillators, slip-proof rugs, and it takes three years involvement in that program. And if the program remains healthy, it will continue to pay you safety grants for you to use.
Should the motion be amended then to include the Illinois Public Risk Fund as the workers' compensation character? I believe the original motion just referenced Gladfelter. Because they are not one of the same.
They are not one of the same, correct.
Yes, I would recommend that this, so it had it now say the insurance agreement is with Gladfelter and?
The Illinois Public Risk Fund for workers' compensation.
Yes. So can we have, can we have a withdraw of the prior motions and have it restated as?
I withdraw my motion.
And withdraw the second? Who's the second?
Second.
I withdraw.
Fine. Now with the motion being made in the form as requested by the city administrator. Motion to approve Gladfelter as well as the Illinois Public, its workers' compensation insurance. I know the kind of.
So moved.
Fuckit.
Any other comments or questions?
On 5.4, we have our floodwater damage coverage. That, the downtown area, the properties we have, it's a valuation of a $1.18 million with everything. It is outside of our flood zone type A, but it would be within the 500-year flood, which has happened to us before. Our coverage is a million dollars, $100,000 deductible. Do we think that that is a sufficient coverage for what we have downtown?
I think you have 5 million with a $25,000 deductible. If it's outside of flood zone A, V or 5.
But the stipulation on the terms are flood coverage on property located within 1,000 feet of flood zone A is limited to 1 million, and the minimal deductible for coverage property located within 1,000 feet of flood zone A.
That is incorrect. That's another typo. I apologize.
Okay. So it should?
I will confirm that to Bart, that that is incorrect.
And if it's not, we can bring it back at the next city council meeting.
And this is just more of a comment, not really a question, but just to point out how when individuals point out about hidden costs and hidden issues that come up when we don't do our due diligence, how sooner or later they come down on the books and our bottom line. When I was a resident and I sat over there, I was against the old jail. I'm still against the old jail. I think that asset needs to be unloaded. It added another $362,000 in assets to our bottom line, which is 2.5% of our full building assets, a $14.883 million. So when people say it's, oh, well, we're getting it at a great price, and there's no future costs associated to this, it's going to be covered by the haunted houses, or it's going to be covered by other things, at the end of the day, it's not, because we have a, almost a 10% increase in premiums, which is due to approximately a 3% increase in cost, in building costs, over the last year, which is understandable. But of the total building costs that we have in our municipality of $14.883 million, 2.5% of that is that old jail. So I just want to point that out, how these costs do come back and cost the taxpayers money. So if anybody's interested in buying an old jail, come on by, make us an offer. I'd be happy to throw it in a committee and move it along, so. That's all I have to say about that.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Pelosi?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Wilshuski?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Thank you, Mike. No public works committee report, no economic development committee report, no public safety committee report, administration committee.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2012, and ending April 30, 2013, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
So moved.
Next, she may.
I'm sorry, the second.
Comments, questions? Take a silence.
Actually, I just want to explain, and I think everybody's aware of this, the levy is the amount of money a taxing body asks for in a giving tax year. According to the state tax cap, even if the government asks for no more money, it does get the difference created by new construction coming on the books for the first time, and an increase up to the amount of the Consumer Price Index. And recently, it was published in the Kendall County, or the Beacon News, I'm sorry, that Kendall County Supervisor of Assessments stated, even if all the taxing bodies kept their levies the same, people would still pay more. The levy, or for Kendall County, under that scenario, the levy for the general fund would rise from about $18.5 million in 2011 to about $18.9 million in 2012. The difference would be an increase of $406,225. And it's, that would come despite the fact that equalized assessed value of property decreased in the county by 7.8%. And that would be because there's fewer property owners or people with less property value paying the same amount of taxes, so everyone is going to have to pay more. Based on a house of $200,000, if the county took the natural increase in the levy, that homeowner would pay $48.06 more to the county in property taxes for 2012. As I stated last year, that doesn't seem like a lot of money, just $48, $48. However, there are 10 taxing bodies. If everybody increases $48, I think we're going to have a Russia people that can't afford the increase in their taxes, and ultimately, I think they'd be leaving Kendall County as well as Yorkville. Therefore, I'm going to vote against the levy that is presented to us right now. Thank you.
George?
I've stated this before, but I'll state it again. I agree with Rose, number one, and, you know, other, other cities and taxing bodies have voted not to take their maximum tax levy or increase their taxes this year, and I urge the Yorkville City Council to do the same. By taking the maximum levy, we're sending a poor message to the other taxing bodies that tax our residents, that it's okay for them to take their max tax caps as well. And I believe this frame of thinking ultimately leads to higher taxes and ever-increasing higher taxes. And I just believe we're taxed too much already, so I don't believe we should be taking our maximum tax cap, and I also will be voting against this.
Anyone else?
I have a question. If we don't take the maximum tax that we have here today, and we decide on a lower number, what is the process? Repubblication, republic hearing? What has to happen for us to?
No, to take a dollar amount, you would just have to amend the ordinance accordingly, and anytime you reduce the tax levy compared to what you published, there's no need to renotice.
What happens, Bart, if that number goes lower? I mean, obviously, even with this new amount, the addition to our general fund is only like $50,000, but that $25,000 of it goes to the library.
Yeah.
Does the library still get that $25,000 even if we lower our levy amount?
Well.
They set their own levy, correct?
Sure. You've got a couple different factors in play. One is the ordinance itself contains an amount above what we actually think we're going to get. So Rob and I's estimate of the actual tax levy dollar amounts are about $86,000 or so more than what we got last year. And at this point, what we actually think we're going to get is being divvied up between the library, which is $25,000 higher than it was last year, and the remaining increment, don't make me do the math in my head, is going to go into the police pension fund. So even though the corporate fund has $50,000 more, I think there's another IMRF one maybe that's a little bit more based on our, you know, our levy request above the tax cap. We don't expect those to come in. So what happens is, in May, when the county clerk finalizes the numbers, does the calculations, they come back to us and said, hey, you know, you've only got $86,000 more than what you got last year. You asked for way too much. We know, based on the conversations that we've had, to just give the money only to the library and police pension. So at this point, if you were to reduce it, let's say you were to say, we're not going to ask for any more dollars than we did last year, you'd be shorting the library fund, which I'm not sure we have the authority to do by law. I'll leave that up to the attorney. And the second would be, you'd be shorting your police pension fund obligation, which is already underfunded each year.
What is the deadline for that? For the automatic funding for, for the police pension fund, that we have to have it funded by before they start dipping into our motor fuel tax?
2016.
All right, well, just to make a public comment as to why I'm voting the way I am. First of all, the reason our number has gone up partly is because we do have new construction, new properties that have come onto the tax roll. And what people have to realize is by voting for this new number, your taxes for Yorkville's portion, which is all we can control, is actually going to go down next year. If we don't start paying down the police pension now, in 2016, correct, it kicks in for a three-year increment that the state will start taking first a quarter, then a half, and then all of our motor fuel tax that we use for many other things, that is, we are required to get that pension solvent. Once again, if we don't do it now, we're kicking the can down the road, and this pension fund's going to have a bigger gap. I'm going to vote for this reluctantly. We can't, we can't, we can't say we're going to fix the city's problems, fix the city's roads, get our pension fund solvent, get our fund in the black, and then not take the revenue that we need to do it. So you will see a reduction in your taxes. It's not as big as I want it to be, it'd be about 30%, but we need this money to start taking care of these obligations. I, I'm going to vote yes for it.
Just a minor correction. It isn't a four in 2016, it's a third in 2016, two-thirds in 2017.
A third to two.
And a 100%.
I'm sorry, a third, two-thirds and 100%.
George?
Carlo, with all due respect, since my time on this council, we've been talking about the police pension funds for years, and what we've been hearing for years is everything's okay, we're sufficiently funded, yet this year, we want to take everything all at once and catch it all up. And, you know, I just think that's the wrong way to go about it. I'm all about the police getting their pensions, but do we have to do it all in one chunk? I'm not so sure, especially in times like this.
But the thing is, this won't catch it all up. We have future obligations to catch this fund up, so if we don't start now, when are we going to start? Otherwise, they're going to start dipping into our motor fuel tax in 2016.
Right, and that's, that's four, that's five years from now, so I mean.
But that also ties into our discussion last time about our road study. If we jeopardize our MFT, then we're jeopardizing our other obligations that we are committing to. If we can't fund our police pension, we're not going to be able to fund any of our roads because they'll start taking those funds from us regardless, and we will be jeopardizing our funding for future projects.
But the X factor there is, right now, this year, as of right now, we're in the worst possibly depression, some people will say, since the Great Depression. And, you know, in two, three, four, five years down the line, things may be better, and you may be able to designate more funds towards those police pensions and other things that we need to pay off. It's just that now's a bad time. People can't pay their bills. And if they can't pay their bills, and you keep taxing them, I don't care how much we try to catch things up, there's not going to be anything there. People are going to leave, and people aren't going to come to Yorkville. People are going to leave, and, and people aren't going to come to Yorkville once people start leaving. So at some point, I don't know, I just, like I said, I, I'm still voting against this. I, I think it's, it's a, it's a bad idea for us to be taking our maximum tax cap, because when, when we take ours, it's okay for the schools to take theirs, and everybody else to take theirs, and that happens year after year after year, and all that does is keep increasing our taxes. And, and the more we increase taxes, the more we have people who are defaulting, who aren't coming to Yorkville, they're leaving Yorkville.
Rose?
I would like to say also that for years, we've been told that the police pension fund is underfunded, but we've been assured that that was okay.
Mm-hmm.
Because every other municipal, many municipalities do that, it's no problem, and we were under the impression that it would be made up. It was okay, whether it was through our budget or whatever. But, um, and I certainly support our, our police department a hundred and twenty percent, and I don't want to jeopardize their pension funds. However, I think that possibly, when we work on the next budget, we can allocate the appropriate amount of money and put it towards the police pension fund. The officers are all paying in their pension dues, their money, and I think we have to support them. However, at this time, with everybody raising taxes, I still cannot support asking for the highest levy that we could ask for.
I believe the sales tax...
Not motor fuel tax, where the extra money comes from, if we don't fund by 2016? Are you remembering that, Rob?
That's my understanding as well.
Yeah, I think it's sales tax, not motor fuel tax.
Oh, which is even worse.
Yes, yes.
Because if they take a third of our sales tax...
That's your general fund.
That's true.
Right.
In reference to Alderman, Spears's remarks, uh, and, uh, George's remarks, I have a number of times expressed, uh, the status of the police pension, and this is quite a long discussion for you to understand everything that goes on, starting from when they went from IMRF, uh, to a police pension, which automatically underfunded it, and we've been playing catch-up ever since then. Uh, in the discussion where I've said a number of times that, uh, we have, we're, we're doing okay, our percentage of funding had increased over the period of time. Uh, in recent years, it has not, um, and, um, well, I guess it has some, but it hasn't enough. The other thing is, they just passed this law that now says in 2016 that we must fund it on a third, or a hundred percent, or they take a third of our sales tax in 16, two-thirds in 17, and a hundred percent of the difference. You've got to understand, if we're, if we're, so if we're underfunded by a hundred thousand in 2016, they would take thirty-three thousand, in 2017, they would take sixty-six, if that stayed the same, and a hundred thousand in, in 2018. Uh, I've never said that we were, quote, perfectly okay. That's the council's interpretation of what I've been trying to project. But we do have forty years to do this. Now, however, as a result of this new law, we have until 2016.
Phil, George?
You know, we, when we discussed this last year, and we discussed the pensions, I was concerned about it too, and we were told that things were okay, and to add on top of that, and yes, they were underfunded, but we were told we were okay, and we were also told that we were better than most of the other municipalities around us in terms of funding the police pensions. And, you know, back to what we're talking about, the reality of the situation, the situation is, is you're asking for a, you know, a tax levy, a maximum tax levy this year, and, and if everybody else takes their maximum tax levy caps, you're talking about increased taxes again, and if that's, keeps happening year after year after year, it, like I said, you're going to, you don't worry about, about people coming to Yorkville, don't worry about new businesses coming to Yorkville, people are going to be leaving Yorkville, because they can't afford to be here, and similar businesses. If people leave Yorkville, businesses won't be here either. So, you know, we, we talk about that police pension fund, and it, I, I remember the discussions distinctly, because I asked a lot of questions about it, because I was concerned about it too, because it showed in black and white that it was underfunded. And we were told time and time again, it was okay, and that we were better than most municipalities around.
Phil, when was the, do you know when the legislation was passed that changed this, that required it to be done by 2016?
It's been, I don't know the exact date, it's been within, what would you say, six months to a year? It's been within the last year, for sure.
Right, so this discussion about the mandated deadline has not come up in the past about, when going through this levy issue. This is a new issue that we have an absolute deadline that we have to fund it. Now, it is something that we do have to consider, because we have four years to fully fund, and we have a big, or five years, we have a large number that we have to put into there before we possibly jeopardize our sales tax, which is our largest revenue stream. Now, I, I will say, I don't like the fact that we have a twenty-five thousand dollar increase by the library board, which, Kathy, do we have any control, or...
That's my understanding of the library.
They are fully controlling...
The library has a certain percentage, and they are, they're not levered by a dollar amount, but by a percentage, should be able to.
The way I understand it, and, uh, I'm not a lawyer, I'll say that ahead of time, is the technical requirements of the PTEL law, which is property tax cap, give the city council authority to basically apply a limiting rate to each individual levy within your umbrella. And the library, although they control their own budget, um, they control the operations of the library, um, and they set their initial request, could be subject to that tax cap. So...
Yeah, it's true.
You know, that would require a separate agenda item and a separate ordinance and resolution by the city council, I would assume.
I don't think so.
Okay.
George?
One more added thing, I mean, funding our police pensions is a necessity. We talk about necessities versus non-necessities. Start voting for necessities and stop voting for non-necessities, and start targeting surpluses towards things like this. Then you won't have to worry about voting people's taxes higher and higher, year after year after year. That's the reality.
Sorry. We're talking about seventy-seven thousand dollars, correct, going into the police pension? Uh, what is, they're underfunded, what amount? Do we have a figure on that?
Well, actually, it's about seventy-seven thousand is the total increment, twenty-five would go to the library, about fifty-two...
Oh, okay.
Fifty-two seventy would go to the police pension fund. I believe the levy amount, based on the extraordinary valuation bill that the pension board accepted, was about five hundred and forty-two thousand, is that correct?
That sounds about right.
Okay.
That's how much it's underfunded?
Well, that's the levy that they recommend that we levy in order to get things back to where they need to be. I don't have the exact figures right now, Bill, do you know how much it's...
You've got, you've got three numbers in general. You've got the highest dollar amount, which would get you to basically be the end goal in 2016, and then you've got a ramp up, which is what the police pension board recommends each year, which is the five forty-two, I believe, if I remember correctly. So the, the goal is actually higher than that, and we're currently proposing, or projecting, uh, to get four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So, even with the fourteen, four thirteen, which is an initial fifty-two thousand dollars over what we got last year, we're still lagging behind what the police pension board recommends, which is lagging behind where the statutory requirement will be in 2016. So, you know, that's one of the things why we recommended to do that this year, is that, let's say no growth happens in the city each year, and we get seventy-seven thousand dollars each year, you know, we're going to be struggling each year, even if we ask for the maximum tax cap, just to fund the police pension liability. So, I mean, given that that gap is so tall, now, we said, chip away at it, five years in advance.
So then I have a concern too, that we pass, then we continue passing the road study, a hundred thousand dollars. We have other things that this council has passed that, they're great, they're great tools, but at this time, I would rather spend that money and put it in the police pension fund. That is something that we should have been looking at for years. That's, that's, I want to go on record as saying that also.
And the list goes on and on, Rose, there's so many other things that we could be targeting towards things like this, that are necessities that we're not doing, we continue not to do.
Rob, the overall tax rate, last year was point nine-two, okay? The estimated tax rate for this next year is point six-eight, a decrease of thirty percent. Now, if we didn't go with this levy amount, well, with last year's levy amount, what effect would that have on the overall tax rate for the city? Any idea?
Did you say it, the question again, ran into my casual?
The overall tax rate last year for the city's portion of property taxes was point nine-two, correct?
Yes.
Our estimated tax rate for this year is point six-eight, correct?
Yes.
A decrease of thirty percent from last year.
Correct.
If we went with a different levy amount, lowered that levy amount to last year's levy amount, what effect would that have on the overall tax rate, if any?
I'm not sure it would, because the reason the tax rate was higher last year is because we levy, we included a lot more debt service than we're planning on doing this year, and that's really what's, I would say, the main driver of the rate.
The question specifically is, what would that point six-eight turn into?
Right, I mean, you're going to lower it to point six-five, I don't think it would even make a difference in that overall tax.
It'd be less, it'd be less than that, yeah.
It's not the city's portion, though, because we all know that's the smallest portion. It's all the other taxing bodies that say, yeah, we're going to take our maximum tax levy too, and that's where our tax levy is in, though, and that's what we need to be worried about. It's the message we're sending.
Okay, anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mike Calhoun? Mike Calhoun?
He heard you, he's thankful.
I did. I apologize.
Aye.
Hut.
Aye.
Colosseum?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Wilshuski?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
I get the word again, huh? Aye.
Uh, question for Kathy. Does that ordinance need a majority of the sitting city council members, or the currently present city council members?
Um, it requires, um, the mayor has the right to vote. I will verify that, because this is a unique situation, but I think we're okay. Hi. So, so how do you weigh that with the general, the general legal rule that the mayor has the opportunity to break the tie?
Right, understood.
Yeah. So for the record, we will consider it passed, we will verify that there isn't a special, uh, uh, rule when it comes to the tax levy ordinance.
Okay, next is electric aggregation referendum.
I would like to make a motion to approve an ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the United City of Yorkville, Kendall County. The public question, whether the city should have the authority, under the Illinois Power Agency Act and Public Act ninety-six dash one seventy-six, to arrange for the supply of electricity for its residential and small commercial retail customers, who have not opted out of such program, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. Second.
Second.
Townes, questions?
You know, I, there's a lot of materials to read on this stuff, and I read it, and then I did a little bit of my own research, and overall, this is the problem I have, um, with, with this referendum. First of all, uh, it's the uncertainty in a very short period of time as to what the costs are going to be anyway. So I, I think it's a lot to do about nothing. Second of all, there's, I, I found at least half a dozen companies right now that you can voluntarily, as a resident, call and, and get into one of these programs to reduce your energy costs. Um, it's, you can do it freely, voluntarily, you can do it on your own, your neighbor can have a different company, you can have a company, there's some freedom of choice there as far as who you're going to go with. This would, in, in essence, then, allow us to choose for you, and then force you to opt out of our decision. I just don't think, quite honestly, at this point, bas- basically, since the, the deadline is looming as far as the lock-in cost for ComEd, um, that we need to pass this. The option is out there for the resident to make their own individual choice to, to, to sign a contract for their reduced energy with the company of their choosing, and I don't think we should be in a position to force company upon them and then have, have to make them opt out of our decision. I think it's cleaner and easier to do it the way that the system is currently set up, so I'm just going to vote no on this one.
You brought up a good point, I guess I need a point of clarification. The reason why we would look at something like this is to, to look at bidding this out in aggregate, which would be a much bigger bid package, which would probably ultimately lower the rates versus a resident calling another company and getting a, a lower rate on their own. Is that correct or no?
That is correct, and the, the spread between individual purchasing and municipal purchasing right now has been thirty percent for aggregate and twenty percent for just calling up a company.
Thirty percent reduction versus a resident?
Thirty percent reduction on one portion of the bill, which ends up being about a total ten percent reduction on your electricity bill.
Which is why I believe this is, is actually a, a good idea. I think that ultimately, if we bid this in aggregate, we will save money, uh, and save the, the residents' money, and if they don't want to be in it, they can opt out and, and still go and individually get the, you know, the service that they need, but...
Yeah, for the record, the intent of this referendum is to allow the municipality to do negotiations, to give the resident another choice.
Mm-hmm.
Not to for, I, I understand, but with every opportunity, there always is work to be done, you know, when you, you do your own insurance quotes when we, we study it. And the idea here is to say, okay, you're going to give us an opportunity, Mr. Citizen, Mr. Or Mrs. Citizen, to negotiate a rate, then you can choose. Is your rate better, or is the consortium rate better? So the intent is not to put anybody in jeopardy, or give them a pain in the neck, but to give them an additional opportunity.
But isn't the rate only locked in at ComEd until June 2013? So by the time the referendum goes through and everything gets done, we're talking about just a little over a year, and then we've got to do this all over again?
No, we would have, you are absolutely right. We don't know if this is going to be beneficial. So let's say this doesn't pass, and the town next door, it, the rates come through, and all the things you and I believe are going to happen with Commonwealth Edison's rate changing, and, and rate increase expiring, and making it a fairer playing field, or a level playing field, uh, what have we lost? Nothing. If this referendum passes and that happens, so that we can't negotiate a better rate, opt out. We believe opting out should not be a problem, you know, more than a, a contact. Um, I will tell you this, most of the municipalities across the state are going to referendum because they do believe that it could possibly give the residents another choice. And as you point out, it may be a waste of time, but fortunately, it's not a, an additional cost to us.
Just to clarify, you do not have to go through referendum again? You would have to go through the, you know, the bid package, the selection, the administration again?
Just clarification, you, you point out in your memo that there's a minimal staff time and money, do we have a number on that?
No, um, the, all the municipalities that I've talked to that have done this so far have spent hundreds of man-hours, um, because they're not going with the broker. So, they're saving a little bit of money in that regard, um, but it's costing them a lot in staff time. So, you know, now, between, uh, when we approve this, goes to referendum, we pass the ordinances, I mean, it could be a, a few dozen man-hours between a couple different employees, um, but I don't expect it to be a large burden.
The other item, if I might be so bold, is, um, in some areas, the, like Metro West, the COGS, the council of governments, are coming together, or have agreed to consider coming together, if these referenda, plural, do pass, so that if we can negotiate as a region, as opposed to the United City of Yorkville, we might even do better for our residents. And that's another opportunity. Um, I've asked the question, my understanding is Metro West is not considered it, because they're waiting to see. I can tell you that there are other COGS that are actually out there saying, if the rev- referendum passes, we will volunteer to do that. And I can't imagine Metro West not also.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, please.
Cut.
Aye.
Colosimo?
Nay.
Spears?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Buck Houser?
Nay.
All right, no park board report? Is there a park board report?
There is no.
Okay, onto Plan Commission. Do a couple of items under Plan Commission. I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance approving the rezoning to the R2 One Family Residence District for the property located at Wordsley Street and Gorney Lane, Henny and Freo Property, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
So moved.
Second. Comments, comments? Any comments or questions on this item?
We're in Plan Commission Number One?
Yes.
Can I just have one quick question for the petitioner? Is there anybody here? Great, how you doing, Dan?
Good.
I have no problem with this, it's just a question of curiosity.
Sure, go ahead.
When it mentions in the, in the petition request and background, it says water and sewer are, are available to the property. We don't have water and sewer there now, and whose water and sewer are they going to get?
Uh, city water and sewer upright at the corner of the property. The north boundary of the property is a home that's in the city that faces Main Street, and there's a line that goes right to the corner of our property for both sewer and water. And then this is a small infill parcel just to the south of it. It's totally densely wooded, Wordsley on one side, gone on the other. And so, we'll extend Main at our expense onto the two lines.
Gotcha. Thank you, Dan.
You bet. Anyone else? Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
Question for Attorney Kramer. If, if this is approved tonight, are they ready to start moving, building on this, or...
I, I wish I could tell you that. Mr. Henny, as, as you may know from past things Larry has built in the town for over 25 years, usually smaller residential projects and commercial projects. He's got a couple of prospects for homes. He won't do them as spec homes. In other words, he wants to sell the house and the lot to, let's say, yourself or an individual, and then start that. So, he's hoping to do both of them next spring, but it all depends on financing for the buyers, and if they like the house, he wants to build it.
Thank you.
You bet.
I attended the hearing, and there were some questions by residents, and I think you answered most of them, but as a follow-up, did you verify that the old well is going to be properly capped?
They're actually out looking for it. They have not been able to find one there, and the health department has no record of it gross.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so Vern has not been able to locate anything, even an old cistern. They can't find anything right now. Now, when they dig foundations, if they find one, they'll cap it, but they literally can't find a thing.
Okay, okay. And they were talking about the runoff?
Yeah, that, there may be a very simple solution to it, and, and we'll certainly work with the city engineer. There's a huge storm sewer that has an easement north-south, just to the east of our property. The question is, can we hook a line into it? Because it's huge. I think it's like a 48-inch line. We could basically do a very small line going east to west along the southern boundary of our property with just inlets in there and pick up all the water and take it over. The question will be whether the city staff wants us to hook into that or someplace else, but we think we can handle it, and Vern is meeting with that one neighbor who can't get his antique fire truck out.
Okay, and I think that's it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to that meeting. Roll call, please.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Buck Houser?
Aye.
Cut.
Aye.
I'll entertain an ordinance for that same property for the preliminary and final plat. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance approving the preliminary and final plat of re-subdivision for the property located on Wordsley Street and Gorney Lane, Henny and Freo Property, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments on that one? Roll call, please.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Buck Houser?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Have a nice Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you, Dan.
You too, thanks, Dan.
Next thing we have under Plan Commission is an Autumn Creek PUD Amendment and re-subdivision of Unit 1A. There are three ordinances to vote on here. The first one, a motion to approve an ordinance approving the second amendment to the planned unit development agreement for Unit 1 of the Autumn Creek subdivision and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
So moved. Second.
Comments, questions on this one? Roll call, please.
Spears?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Buck Houser?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Colosimo?
Aye.
The next one in that series, a motion to approve an ordinance approving the Autumn Creek PUD Unit 1A Final Plat of re-subdivision and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. So moved.
Second.
Comments, questions? Roll call, please.
I also attended that public hearing, and I'd like to comment on some of the public's comments. Residents were complaining about tall, out-of-control weeds, and that was a major problem. And the public safety issue was no sidewalks, and there was metal sticking out of some empty lots. And they were questioning when the sidewalks would be put in, and they mentioned that the walking trails still flooded, and the trail was fixed at one time. However, now it floods more and standing water stays longer. And they asked that the deed to the condo association, that they deed it to the condo association, and they were asking for sod to be placed where the areas connect. And I, I would like to comment that I was informed that you went ahead and said that you would put the sidewalks in, and I'd like to thank you very much, and I'm not sure how many other issues here you did address. Yes?
Thanks again for having us this evening on the agenda. My name is Peter Tremulus, I work with Full T Homes. We do have two guests this evening, Chuck Byram, who's our corporate counsel, and Ken Hume, who is our civil engineer from HR Green. With regards to the sidewalk issue, we did go out and take a look at it and talk with the resident who had concerns about the sidewalk. We actually made the offer to put the sidewalk in almost immediately after the meeting, but we were informed that November 1st was the cutoff date to put in public walk. So, we informed the resident that we would put that in as soon as we could in the spring. With regards to the piece of wrought rebar that's extending from the sidewalk, I went over there and took a look at it this evening before the meeting. We also informed the homeowner that we would cut that off as quickly as we could, so there, one of the crew is supposed to be over there to do that shortly, within a couple of days. So, that should take care of that. And I think the homeowners' association president was at the meeting, and he had offered to take over responsibility and maintenance for a couple of the small lots that are a common area, as proposed on the plat. And we will follow up with him and appreciate his offer and plan to sod those areas and have the association then maintain those going forward.
Regarding the sidewalks, would you be able at this time to put gravel down and then wait until it's appropriate?
You know, the thought is not to kind of encourage people to use that area until it's a public walk. Right now, they can cross the street and use the sidewalk on the other side of the street. So, to put down gravel, which is an uneven surface, and since the resident who brought it to our attention that the sidewalk was necessary to put in, has a special needs child, we probably don't really want to put something in there that would encourage people to use it that we couldn't really maintain and keep it safe. So, I would say probably not. The best thing to do is put a real sidewalk in and wait for the weather to accommodate our ability to do that for the village ordinances.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ruth?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? And could you state your name for the record one more time, please?
It's Peter Tremulus. It's Tea Like Tom. Sure, okay. Tea Like Tom, R-E-M is in Mary, U-L-I-S. You bet.
Here, there's no questions. Roll call, please.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Buck Houser?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
There's one more ordinance in that re-subdivision. A move, oh, it's a resolution, a res, this is, oh, okay. A motion to approve a resolution approving the Autumn Creek Unit 1 plat of vacation and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. So moved.
Second.
Comments, questions? Roll call.
I just want to say, I'm much happier with this plat than the previous plat that was approved, so I'm just very excited that that was done, so...
And this, um, just for the record, this goes from, what, 107 townhomes down to 34 single-family? Mm-hmm. No, I'd be happy with it myself, I live there. Roll call, please.
Gilson?
Aye.
Buck Houser?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Okay, I'm assuming there's no ZBA report? No city council report, city clerk's report? City treasurer's report? Community liaison reports? I know Miss Spears has a big one.
Very important, very important, very important.
It's probably the most important report I ever gave. At this time, I'd like to share the results of the Torch-run trivia night presented by the Oswego Police Department and the Oswego Knights of Columbus, as well as the Special Olympics Illinois event that took place Saturday, November 19. Trivia included 10 rounds of 10 questions in various categories, such as sports, television, movies, president. Our team named Jimmy Buffett's Margaritaville. Members included Jessica Bannister, Carlo Colosimo, Darlene Colosimo, Gary Galinski, Ryan Morton, Lisa Pickering, Matthew Prohaska, Molly Schwartzkoff, Tony Scott, and Tony Weeks. And I am just delighted to announce that this intelligent world of knowledge team took first place. And further... I forgot what? Further, I'd like to say that this team returned the money that they were awarded, $250, to the Special Olympics of Illinois, and the event raised $3,752.25.
And I'd just like to add that no good team is, is any good without a good leader. The team was put together by Rose Spears, and she organized our team, so thank you to you, Rose.
Oh, you're welcome.
And we are available for parties. Any other liaison reports, George?
I have two. The first, I'd like to do on the Yorkville Bristol Sanitary District meeting on November 14th, 2011. There was a call to order and all were present. First, there was a GIS presentation by Greg Weber on behalf of Deutschhorn Associates, and they entertained a GIS system and discussed potential cooperation between YBSD and Yorkville to complete a shared GIS system. Greg claims Yorkville's is, is a long way off and still needs a lot of work and data entry, and therefore, we may be interested in working with them to complete that GIS entry. The second one was their motion, there was a motion approving the placing file. They approved that. There were public comments. There was some discussion about the, once again, the permitting process that we had, I discussed in the past, where we discussed issues between the YBSD and, and the city in terms of how we were permitting, or how we weren't approaching them before we actually let the, the developer go ahead and, and build. So, they said they've had a lot of discussions since then, and that they have a commercial green card type system in place for permitting, and the YBSD hopes the system will work well going forward and is used correctly, and they want to avoid any red tags or construction shutdowns. So, they did report on that, and I'm glad to hear that. I think we should be working together on that. There was a motion approving goods and services utilities for payment, motion approving that for different dates, which is basically their bill list. Motion approving the district becoming a general member to the YEDC, and actually, that motion, they talked about the, Lynn Dubachek approached them, and said the EDC's hurting for funds, and Lynn asked for the YBSD to become a general member from an associate member, and they said they'll delay that for more thought and consideration. Motion approving an inter-fund transfer. They approved a $75,000 from, transfer from checking to a money market account for their bills. That was approved. And there was also discussion on a five-step pay increase for employees, or five, excuse me, five-year step increase for employees. Susan passed out the details at the meeting, and Kevin Coleman, who's the director, said that he believes this should be looked at on a case-by-case basis and shouldn't be passed from, from a whole perspective. That's the YBSD report, and then I had one other report. I had the pleasure of listening to our state treasurer, Dan Rutherford, speak this weekend. And his big discussion amongst all in the room were reduction of state spending. Some of the things he talked about were reduction of city vehicles, reduction of cellphones, reduction of all sorts of things, all the way down to $285 for a reduction of calendars for their desks. You know, he said from big to small, the state needs to reduce Springfield. He said Springfield needs tough love right now, and they need to say no to non-necessity spending. There's $147 billion in state public pensions that are unfunded. Bond rating in Illinois is the worst in the country next to California. 66% income tax increase from the state, which is a one-week of your pay, which is the recent increase that was taken, only pays for this year's pension payment only and not any of their bills. So, I mean, we talk about the state of affairs we're in, and I think that's pretty serious. There was several other speakers, too, but I thought that, that report was pretty interesting. The other thing that was an interesting website for all to look at is, is a website called deadbeatillinois.com, and that website lists, is a, is a list of all who has owed money by the state or any resources by the state. And if you haven't seen that, log on to that website and take a look. It's, it's pretty overwhelming, so I appreciate your time.
Who else? The mayor liaison reports. Milshuski.
I was invited by Choo350, as were you, and to come talk to them. They're doing some information, it's a badge, I'm sorry, it was a scout for government, so it was quite interesting. Had a pack night, a lot of little boys there, got to talk. Best part was I let them ask questions, and the most interesting was, they want to know what kind of video games you like to play. Yeah, Little Cub Scout. Wanted to know if that's what you do, is play video games when you're mayor. Which ones you like?
I'm not a big fan of video games. If I do, it's Golden Tee. Golf is about it.
So, it was a very nice evening, a nice bunch of people.
I wish I could have made it.
They missed you.
Anyone else? I'm assuming there's no staff reports?
There's none.
Additional business?
Yes.
I would just like to wish the staff and the council members and all our residents a very happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Anyone else?
I brought this up via email, via conversations with Eric and the Public Works Committee and an admin committee, but I think it needs to be brought up again. I've had numerous complaints about leaf pickup being too, too early in Yorkville, especially on the south side of town, which is where I live, and therefore, there's too many leaves to bag and dispose of. And I've had many, many, many emails about this. I'd love to ask again for reconsideration of a second round of pickup to make sure our residents are satisfied, at least on the south side of town where we picked up leaves early. So, like I said, it was, I had to know, and this isn't something I'm surprising anybody with, I've had an overwhelming flood of emails about this, and many believe we need to look at that again, so... I mean, it's something at this point we've talked about. I'm not sure that we have the resources to be able to do another pass in the entire town before snowfall hits, and we've been telling everybody that's called and contacted us that at this point, you know, we're only doing one. Leaf pickup is available via bagged service for the rest of the month, and that's probably your best bet as far as getting leaf pickup this year.
Okay, we have no executive session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All right.
Aye.
Opposed?
I think the ayes have it.